I'd like to call to order the Tuesday, November 1st, 2022 Norristown Council Meeting to order. Can I have a moment of silence and pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Catholic Church of St. Juan, nation of God and visible, the good Jesus Christ.
Madam Secretary, can I have a vote, please?
Rebecca Smith?
Here.
Hakeem Jones?
Here.
Rashad Bates? Tiffany Henley? Dustin Queenen?
Here.
Heather Lewis?
Here.
Thomas LaPere?
Here. Can I have a motion to approve the previous minutes?
Removed.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Executive session announcement, we did have an executive session on legal for, would it be, um, legal?
Yes. Yeah, potential litigation. Potential for that, yeah.
Madam Vice President, do we have any announcements?
Um, we do have one announcement since I have a ticket to the Norristown High School Cheerleading Designer Bag Bingo on Saturday, November the 12th at 6:00 PM. Tickets are... Cat, remember what the ticket price was? Me? Somebody? No. Well, tickets are on sale for the Norristown High School Cheerleading Designer Bag Bingo. Is there any other announcements, Council?
Kevin, do you have, for announcements, the budget hearings, do you know the dates off the top of your head?
Um, it's on the form over there. There's, um, files available. I believe it's November 9th and November 21st.
November 9th at 6:00 PM and November 21st at noon.
Okay. Thank you. Madam Secretary, do we have any public comment?
Yes. Laura Lancaster?
Yes, hi. All right, I'm already complaining about my block that I live on. I've had a trash situation for over half a year now. I mean, this summer I couldn't use my yard or anything because of my next door neighbor's yard, and I've complained, I'mteamed times to code, and I'm getting nowhere with it. Just keep saying, "We'll find them, we'll find them." And I hear there's rodents and all, and I'm, I mean, I'm afraid of mice or anything else, you know, and there's possums running around, raccoons, and they can't even get out their back door because the tree is right up against the back of their house, so that's a fire hazard. And I just want to really try to have some attention given to that situation, please.
And your name again, I'm sorry, I missed that.
Pardon me?
Your name and address again.
My name's Laura Lancaster. I live at 804 Green Street, and I'm complaining about the property at 806 Green Street, which I complain about numerous times.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
That's it.
Anybody else that did not sign up that would like to make a public comment? Seeing none, we'll move right into the development proposal for 500, 600, and 700 East Washington Street. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. -- although we have one more. Oh, you got some?
Oh, public comment?
Yeah.
Sure.
Can you stand up and tell us your name and your address, please?
My name is Cynthia Colbreth. I was invited here by Commissioner Lawrence and Heather Lewis to talk about honoring Josh Colbreth in Norristown, Pennsylvania. And I wrote, um, I wrote something to, to Borough Council to say, "I am here to talk about my cousin Josh Colbreth, who was a well-known, who was well-known in the Norristown community as an Olympic hero, legend, and icon. During the worldwide shutdown of the pandemic, I had the passion to write a book about Josh called The Olympian Leap: The Life and Legacy of Josh Colbreth. I had researched and gathered a lot of information about Josh through the years of his life and legacy. I was compelled to record all the memories to be remembered." I had researched and gathered a lot of information about Josh through the years of his life and legacy. I was compelled to record all the memories to be remembered in the town he grew up. Everywhere Josh was, he spoke about his humble beginnings out of Norristown. Mr. Colbreth is a known fixture in Norristown as an Olympian, icon, and hero. He has had an amazing career as an international athlete, both on and off the track. Mr. Colbreth has made history, breaking world records, is a Hall of Famer, a Penn Relays Wall of Famer, and countless other accolades. Josh rose all the way to the 1956 Olympic Games in Melbourne, Australia, and won the bronze medal. Josh won gold medals during the 1955 Second Pan-American Games in Mexico City and in 1959 at the Third Pan-American Games at Soldier's Field in Chicago, Illinois. His athletic accomplishments include a Pennsylvania state high champion in the 200-yard low hurdles and ranked number two in the USA in 1951. From 1953 to 1955, Josh was third-time National AAU/USA Champion and Records Holder in the 440-yard hurdles. He was three-time Penn Relays Champion in the 400-meter hurdles for three consecutive years in 1953, 1954, and 1955. The Penn Relays University of Pennsylvania inducted Josh into the Wall of Fame in 1994. He held the all-comers record for the fastest time in the following countries: Ireland, Belgium, Greece, Lebanon, Ceylon, India, Mexico, Congo, Iraq, Nigeria, Germany, Scotland, Ghana, and Italy. Josh broke many world records. One of them, he broke the world record for the 440-yard hurdles in 1957 in Oslo, Norway, and a world record in the 300-yard oval grass-track bandoing Australia in 1956. He won several military and NATO track and field medals, including his induction into the Marine Corps Sports Hall of Fame. Josh served as Quantico Marine Man. In 1988, Arthur Ashe acknowledged Josh in his book titled "A Hard Road to Glory" as first black Olympic medalist in the 400-meter hurdles. There are too many more laurels to name. A lot of quality athletes came out of Norristown because of Josh's influence. He coached and mentored people in school. He was a teacher and educator. Josh had the persona to bring success in every area of life. It goes on and on. I can talk about his legacy for hours, or you can read the book. The book will tell you more about him for who he was. It's sad that he couldn't be here to see the magnitude from the excitement of his book by readers who want to know everything about him. He influenced so many lives in a positive way. Josh was the first black school teacher in secondary schools in Norristown. He said that was an achievement. He made a difference in their lives. I received Facebook messages by people Josh touched through their lives, and he was their hometown teacher. I can't even begin by Olympians, all the track and field runners, students who told me how Josh got them to move on to college. Morehouse students saw his accomplishments and were influenced by him. One of them was Edwin Moses. Josh was athletic director during the time Edwin, during the time Edwin was... I can't even turn this second page. The greatest track athlete at Morehouse College and became the greatest of all-time Olympian hurler who had already won gold medals in the 400-meter hurdles at the 1976 and 1984 Olympics. Josh didn't put just Norristown on the map, he took it around the world. He was recognized by Presidents of the United States such as Dwight D. Eisenhower and Bill Clinton. In June 1993, Josh rose all the way to the White House Rose Garden, invited by the 42nd President of the United States, Bill Clinton, to be honored for leading his track and field team to 10 NAIA Championships within eight years. Al Cantello told me, "His record speaks for itself." Josh was an influencer. These are the many fascinations I learned about my cousin as a young girl growing up. I wrote the book to share with someone important who brought admirable, admirable attention to his hometown, Norristown, Pennsylvania. It's a celebration for me to tell his story and share his history with you. On July 1st, 2021, Josh passed away. I was emotionally upset over that because he didn't get to know I wrote a book about him. That broke my heart, but it warms my heart to know that the book about his life and legacy resonates the way I hope it will with future generations and the people of Norristown, Pennsylvania, a town Josh loved. Not only was he an Olympic athlete and considered a known legend, hero, and icon of Norristown PA, but he was involved in so many other things in the community. The municipality of Borough Council, I look forward to you connecting me with elective level officials controlled by city council and Norristown area school districts. From 1956 to 2022, I believe it's time to honor and stamp a future for Mr. Joshua Colbreth in Norristown, Pennsylvania, a town he loved. I am looking forward to you honoring his legacy. This would inevitably bring other world-known athletes to his dedication ceremony, supporting his legacy that has been talked about for years. I have well-known connections with Olympians and athletes who would be honored and eagerly to attend his memory service. The consensus of the Olympic athletes I have interviewed in this book said it is a long overdue to recognize Josh. All these athletes... I'm done, I'm done. All these have been honored in their hometown. Thank you.
Thank you. We will be in public. Any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to 500, 600, and 700 East Washington Street. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. Council, we have before us today Ms. Rebecca Swanson, who is the Executive Director of the Montgomery County Redevelopment Authority. And our guest today is Mr. Jason Dempsey, who is a developer, and they like to talk about a proposal Mr. Dempsey has for 500, 600, and 700 East Washington Street. As you may know, this is a piece of property that has sat vacant for, certainly for the nine years I've been here before. I came on board, and the, the RDA has worked tirelessly to put out RFPs for the, for that property, and several of those RFPs have been rejected, and rightly so, by Council and the Authority in terms of being appropriate and appropriate use. And so, we've, we've been introduced to it as staff, and we thought it was certainly something worthy of Council hearing and considering. So, I'll turn it over to Rebecca to kind of lead you, lead discussion with Mr. Dempsey.
Absolutely. Thank you, Crandall. Thanks, Council. Thank you, President LaPere. Yeah, so, as you all will remember, it was about a year ago that we re-released the request for proposals and qualifications for the Washington Street site. This is the parcel of land right off of Lafayette Street at the new Ford Street, I believe, interchange, right next to the sewer plant. It was originally purchased to be an additional sewer plant, and is now not. It, obviously, as we all know, a very difficult parcel to develop, given the floodplain, given its location. So, when we put out the RFP, we were very pleased to get what I thought was a very interesting and strong proposal from Mr. Dempsey of DP Partners for a multi-use athletic fields facility. The, in the RDA's preliminary review, it meets the qual, the, all of the requirements we put forth in the RFP. So, again, we worked with, with Crandall and Jane and their staff to do a preliminary conversation and decided that it was an appropriate time to bring it before Council for your consideration. So, I will turn it over to Jason Dempsey from DP Partners to discuss the proposal, their proposal that they've submitted.
Rebecca, thank you very much for the warm reduction. I did bring some hard copies that we could pass around if I could just... Yeah, sure, be happy to. Hopefully, we brought individual copies. I need to take a closer look at it. And, do you want me to stand in here? Okay. And ma'am, I just want to acknowledge your story about Josh. I, I was inspired listening, so thanks for sharing that. I try and give everybody a little bit of background on myself. My name's Jason Dempsey. I grew up in the Manny Young section of Philadelphia. I'm no stranger to Norristown. Actually went to Archbishop Carroll down the street. And when I was about 15 years old, when I was looking to get my license, I picked up a job doing maintenance, and I actually was down at this, where there was a building here, and I was painting, I was being paid to paint a fence. So, my, the biggest pleasure I had was going across the street up to the main street and having a, you know, grabbing a hoagie at Lou's. So, um...
Right.
Exactly, yeah, exactly. Exactly. And I had an orange soda every time. The, so, I, I have good memories of it. But my experience, I've been in the real estate development business for a little over 20 years, 10-plus years of which under my own flag for DP Partners. Things that, if you wanted to look at our website, were very visible via the web, you can look at some of the projects that we have done. And when Rebecca and I connected on the RFP for this particular project, what you see in front of you was the vision that we had for it. And there's, it, it, there's a main reason for it. If you look at Norristown from 30,000 feet, and you look at the infrastructure that's here, that's available, and that's planned, it makes it very, very attractive for a facility such as this. So, and when you look at the Norristown Transportation Center and how that connects all through the different counties, whether you're coming from Chester County, Delaware County, all the way into Montgomery County right now, you can, you can get here via public transportation. The proposed slip ramp with, at the Pennsylvania Turnpike. And when you take an even bigger step back and a bigger look at where Norristown is on a map, it is the dot on the map of the mid-county, right? So, you can pull from as far north as the Lehigh Valley, as far south as Delaware, and it's very accessible. So, those were a couple of the initial things that attracted us to this site. The vision for the site right now is what you see in front of you, their athletic fields. These athletic fields represent three outdoor fields and one indoor facility. The indoor facility is slightly smaller, and frankly, this is, um, uh, this is a, a lot smaller than what we really would like to do in the, in the community. But what I see happening here, and what I see this becoming, is an opportunity for a regional, at least a regional destination for youth sports and youth sports travel. So, if anybody's ever had a child, whether they're in AAU basketball, whether they're playing soccer, lacrosse, field hockey, whatever the sport is, if, if you've ever had to get in a car and go drive some far distance where you think to yourself, "Why am I driving an hour away for, for a 30, 60, 40-minute game?", that is, that is part of what we see happening here. So, we, I have a relationship with several organizations right now that can bring to this facility the type of activity that it would require in order to facilitate it, because it is an expensive investment. I think one of the biggest things about this facility is it takes, any other proposal that we've ever seen for this cuts off the waterfront from, from, cuts the waterfront off from the community. When you have open fields and you can see straight down clear to the river, I think it presents itself as a very neat opportunity. But what we've seen, and I can tell you from personal experience, because I do have children that are in travel sports, which is a bit of the inspiration for this, I've had the good fortune to be able to travel, quite frankly, all around the country with my kids, watching them play youth sports. And when you go to certain facilities that are, like, when you go to certain facilities that are in these various areas, whether it's Arizona, whether it's North Carolina, or wherever it might be, I'm from Philadelphia, I have Philadelphia glasses on when I go to these places, and I think, wow, why can't we have one of these at home? I mean, it is really the most unbelievable thing. When you get there, there are thousands of kids and families, and they're paying for hotels, and they're eating at restaurants. I mean, you know, you go to one of these things, you can't get a seat at a restaurant. So, when I look at this, this, to me, is the beginning of an initial impact of, in a positive way, to bring some additional traffic to the town, to support some of the local businesses. Beyond that, one of the other relationships we'd be bringing to the table is we have an after-school program available to us. So, that after-school program, it's existing, it's not a new, it's not a new venture, it's present in several other communities right now. And what they do is they make a coordination with the school district. It doesn't cost the school district any money, doesn't cost the kids any money, and what they do is they incorporate that after-school program. So, they get the kids down there, and they keep them active, and they get them out on field. So, I really can't look around, within a, within a big distance and say, you know, where is there something like this, with turf, with lights, and it doesn't just happen, happen to be on the weekends. So, it is a seven-day-a-week operation, typically done by probably 10:00 PM because they're kids. And it's not just practices out there. So, what you get are, you get these tournaments that come in, and it can be various sports. So, to me, it's the first step in the right direction of becoming a regional draw. Because I think if you look down the road and to compare it to something like the Concha Hockin Proving Grounds, they, even though they're right down the road, they're not reaching over and having that impact, because Norristown becomes a drive-through to get there. Believe me, because I go there. So, I go down 202, I come down, I drive past this site every single time, I might stop at the Wawa and pick up some food and throw it at my kids in the backseat, and then we go right into Concha Hockin. I think what this facility does is starts to bring some of that to and into Norristown. I'm going to take a quick pause there, because I know I ran through a whole lot of things, but does anybody have any, any questions for me at this point?
Council, any questions?
I didn't know which way to look, by the way. I was kind of...
I'll just say, you know, I'll just say that, you know, these facilities, I, you know, been studying these a lot lately, and, you know, I've been looking at wanting competitive edge in King of Prussia, and the economic impact that they have is over $50 million a year for upper-American township. So, you know, you're spot-on with that. The only concern I have, I guess, might be that Rebecca might be able to help me here, is that I believe that there was some kind of, like, outlandish, like, $4 billion lien or from the government.
In the RFP, there are, there were two funding issues. There was a Penn Vest loan that has approximately $800,000 left on it, and a 3.7-ish million H2O grant from DCED that is required to be paid back if the property is not used as a sewer plant. We have had preliminary discussions with the Wolf Administration, and then our solicitor has done some digging about whether or not that's, can actually be required, because we've never, there's some legal technicalities there. That was in the RFP, it's clear, and I think that that is an ongoing discussion. The county is technically on the hook.
I was going to ask, is that parcel, that, so, the county...
They're on behalf of the county.
Of the county, okay.
Most of the time, we're doing it on behalf of Norristown.
Right. This is on behalf of the county, got you.
That Norristown makes a decision.
Does the county, is the county aware of this project and...
And liens?
And the liens, and what we need to do to try to develop it?
Yes.
Okay.
There's no commitment whatsoever from them, but they're, the awareness is there.
And there's a willingness on our part to work with the RDA, RDA, and work with the county to try and come up with some solutions on how to resolve that, too. I think some private-public partnerships sometimes actually do come together, and there's a lot of times we see things a little bit differently, especially in dealing with the capital markets a lot of times. So, we'll certainly bring any ideas or concepts through the RDA and, and make sure they're aware of some of the things we might be able to do there.
Sounds good. Council, any other questions?
I've got one. Hi. Hey, thank you for reading the proposal much better than what it is now. You said that you're looking at, like, thousands of people coming in, but this is, what, like, 200-some parking spots, right? So, I guess just traffic in the area and how that's all managed, and what you're thinking about that is my question.
Sure. I, I think, well, first of all, it wouldn't be all at one time. So, I think you're looking at evolutions of people coming in and out, so ebbs and flows. So, I'm not a traffic engineer. We typically hire traffic engineers to demonstrate what that traffic flow is going to look like, and what if at all any off-site improvements would be required in order to do that. I will say that I think the advantage for the public transportation is far in excess of what people really think. Right now, I know there are kids that are coming into the Norristown Transportation Center and being picked up by coaches, you know, so I think it does really start to bring that a little bit closer. The, my, not an embellishment, but rather unclear thousands of people, I think it's a consistency, right? So, you have something that's not just coming all in at one shot, and that you can expect a consistent flow, particularly during times when you're going to have tournaments that come. So, you have a flow of people that come in, a game gets played, flow of people come out, and then the next people come in. So, then you have that, that ebb and flow, that's going to happen. But again, I'm not a traffic engineer. Once, if we were to get to a next step, we start to present some of that data with traffic engineering.
Actually, competitive sports, or, I think if youth boys, like soccer, basketball, bring in actually less people per car than youth girls, you know, for whatever reason, so you're going to have multiple people per car as well.
Interesting breakdown.
It is. I learned that.
Those girls travel the race.
I feel like, you know, like, send your boy to, like, the game. Girls, all bound and gauged.
And the older you are in the family, right? So, I, I'm, I'm lucky, I straddle both sides, and I have two daughters and a son, and, and so I've been the, and the son happens to be the youngest, so there are a lot of times where, you know, "Why don't you catch a ride, bud?", you know, so, "We got to run over here." But now, all kidding aside, I think, too, it is, it is a boys' and girls' location. And like I said, this, um, this should be a much larger facility in order to have that, that national impact. So, kind of threading the needle on this, there's, there's a demand within the Northeast Corridor for a national destination for youth sports.
There is another RFP coming up.
We've heard, I've heard, yeah. And I, I will say, like I said, I've been, again, very fortunate, Florida, Arizona, Carolinas, I've seen these large county facilities or these large privately-owned facilities, and it's just eye-popping as to what they really are. And youth sports is, you know, I mean, it's, it's, I think, round numbers, I think it's like a $40 billion a year business. This is not a $40 billion facility, but it does start to pull people in, because I went through, before we put this plan together, we did do somewhat of a scratch on the zoning code. You know, one of the things that's going to be needed in order to make this facility happen is going to be lights, right? So, you have turf and lights. Sport lighting, I don't think really is considered in the code right now. The, the idea of using turf, it allows you to use the facility almost year-round. We've, I have vivid memories of taking my kids to a, to a practice, and the snow's been pushed up and piled up on the, you know, on the sides, and it's easier for them to clear, you know, to clear the field. They train in the middle of December. Yeah, it's, it just, again, is this consistency that you get. Do we do have a steel frame building, so we were able to fit three fields on the inside of it, you see there? That would be, you know, a column-free, you know, we picture sort of like that American Steel-type building where it's just clear span look. And that's usually typically for the younger kids. You know, they don't perform or acclimate as well as some of the older kids do when playing outside in colder weather. So, that is what you see up there. For the, there are, within the plan, and that's something that we want to bring to everybody's attention in terms of ingress and egress, I think that maybe some opportunities to work with the Borough to discuss some of the right-of-ways that are there, to maybe perhaps better improve it. I've been down to this site with a plan in hand, looking at it. If you see things that are on a plan and then see them in person, you, you know, right where the, where the fence is now, it kind of is already in the middle of the right-of-way, so it's not really being used, it could be better utilized, and see, we put some parallel parking there along the side of the street. And then on the, we think, and Rebecca looked into it for us, too, what's the existing ingress, egress on the facility, seems to be a little bit of hair on the survey plan that we did, so we conducted a survey of the property. And, you know, we're looking into some of those details, too, so, not to get too technical, but, you know, there's some things to work out. We are along the waterfront, you know, we have, will have to deal with Army Corps of Engineers and a lot of other agencies that I've dealt with over the past 20 years, and it's, it's just, it takes, takes some effort.
Interesting point you brought up there, with the ingress, egress. And Chief might be able to help me out here. Would that, the train tracks going there, and in the case of emergency, would that affect some kind of development here as well?
No, because we'd be able to access off of the Cal Street. So, it does currently have two ways into that, off of Ford and then off of the Cal.
Okay. Councilman Jones?
Yeah, I'm 100% on board with this. You know, I grew up my whole life playing sports, and one thing Norristown lacks is facilities for our kids. I have a three- and five-year-old, that's one of my biggest concerns. I see families every weekend, everywhere but Norristown, playing sports. I see it every Friday night. We lose kids, we lose families, we lose competition, we lose on, we lose Friday nights. We lose kids, we lose families, we lose competition, we lose on, we lose Friday nights because we don't have these type of facilities. So our feeder's going to exist because we don't have these type of facilities. So I think it's the perfect thing to put in an area that's not really being used. And it's also going to help adults because I, I played in an aerial sports over in Devon, right over on King of Pressure, you know, co-ed football, you know, that brings in money, it brings in revenue. So I'm 100% on board with it. I just hope the county situation, I think, I hope they can put our community first and resolve a way to handle whatever's happening in that area. But this is what keeps people here and determines whether people go or not sometimes, so.
Couldn't agree with you more, and you said three and five?
Three and five.
Can I convince you to get into soccer because we get more soccer players?
Anytime.
I, I, just hearing you say that, I completely agree with you. Right now, I live in Malvern, Pennsylvania, and I get in a car and I drive to Concha Hocken. And I think it's a great facility. I think it's run great, it's, it's been great for my family, but we make that, we make that trip because we don't have anything like that. Now, we don't have anything like that because, believe me, I've had this conversation, I can't tell you how many times, in different, in different townships. And people think I'm crazy when we're talking about this. And, but we still, we have to get in the car and drive down the road. And I've, I've presented this in other townships, and I don't think anybody's really wrapped their head around the positive impact. And like you said, I leave, I take my dollar, I get in my car, fill my gas up now at this Wawa in, you know, right out here. If I have to buy something to eat or I have to stop, I take my dollar out of that township. So that dollar is leaving every time, and it's going somewhere else. So I've seen it, and I appreciate, appreciate your, your gestures on that. Good luck with the three- and five-year-old.
Counsel, any questions?
And I'm in agreement with everybody. I think this is a great idea and concept for that particular area. But you said a couple times that this is smaller than what you would see for a national kind of impact. And President LaPera mentioned that there could potentially be an opportunity for said national project. How would that, considering, I'm not sure if you're familiar, but the timeline is relatively short considering what you're doing here versus when that thing, the national project may be available online. How would that impact the smaller facility?
I think what it could do is change the configuration of it. The demand's there. Having been to tournaments and been, you'll have, the proximities are important, right?
So that's a positive that the, the national could be in the same town?
Hundred percent, hundred percent. And, yeah.
I don't want it to stall your...
No, it's, it's, it's great, no. And, you know, we take a big risk a lot of times because ideas are free, right? So we try and bring a creative vision to wherever it is we're working on. I'm a very hands-on developer. I'm at all my meetings. I rarely have an attorney standing up doing our talking for us. What I see happening here, like I said, is to attract the nationals. Right now, I've, I, again, I know I've been repetitive about it, but it's important. You know, I have to get on a plane with my kids to take them to a national event. And it's the national organizers who organize the tournaments and everything else, they're looking for it, they're asking for it too. So I think it does bring, it puts Norris Town, my vision is it puts Norris Town on the map as a national location destination for youth sports travel.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thanks for having me.
Thank you.
No fails.
No eagles, birds.
We'll go right into Resolution 22-72, Chief.
Mr. President, I'm requesting four handicap parking spaces at the following addresses: 614 East Mort Street, 1308 R Street, 214 Nassau Place, 1108 West Erie Street. The residents at those following addresses have medical conditions that impact their mobility, and he must park close to home. I recommend that you approve it.
Counsel, any questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve Resolution 22-72?
Set motion.
Second.
Madam Secretary.
Rebecca Smith.
Hi.
Hakeem Jones.
Hi.
Dustin Queenan.
Hi.
Heather Lewis.
Hi.
Thomas LaPera.
Aye, 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 it's have it, resolution passes. Building codes and enforcement, historical architectural review, review board of September 2022.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counsel, before you, is a request to approve or deny the historical architectural review board applications, which were received, reviewed, and recommended for approval by HAR for September 2022. As you all know, the Norris Town HAR receives applications on a monthly basis for exterior repairs and renovations for properties located in Norris Town's historic districts. Those applications are reviewed by the HAR members to confirm that the repair or renovation work is in compliance with our municipal ordinance. The HAR has reviewed the applications and have approved either as submitted or modified, as mentioned on the COA, the phone to properties, 503 Barbados and, sorry, 704 West Marshall Street.
Counsel, any questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the historical architectural review board of September 2022?
Seven.
Seven.
Madam Secretary.
Rebecca Smith.
Hi.
Hakeem Jones.
Hi.
Dustin Queenan.
Hi.
Heather Lewis.
Hi.
Thomas LaPera.
Aye, 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 it's have it, motion passes, thank you. Ms. Spister, authorization to advertise the first reading of Ordinance 22-05.
Good evening, Counsel. Tonight, we, I am requesting authorization to advertise the first reading of Ordinance 22-05 affecting the fiscal year 2023 budget and establishing the real estate tax rate for 2023. Now, this is just a summary of what we've discussed in the past meetings for the 2023 budget. First, just as a summary, where we are for 2022. We have several operating costs that are very high due to inflation, gas prices, and so on. Overtime is up due to staffing shortages and a decline in volunteer firefighters. But on the positive side, Act 511 taxes are doing better than expected, and this offsets some others' costs. But still, as budgeted, we still expect to need ARPA funds to supplement the 2022 budget, so we still are behind. For 2023, at our first look, we have, we have a $1.89 revenue gap. Revenues still are fairly flat, but costs continue to increase. And even with this gap, we still have additional concerns for next year. We're currently in negotiations with lease for the contract, so there's a potential increase for that. Inflation, we don't know where that'll go, a potential recession next year, stock market, all these things will affect how, what we've budgeted so far. And in addition, we have the recreation area that may incur additional labor and operating costs going into next year. So there are concerns. This is a summary of what we have gone through in detail. As you can see, the, now, the 22 budget revenue is going to be a little bit higher. So the revenue goes up, we're anticipating 2.5% increase in revenue, but expenses are around 7.3. Part of that is staffing, part of that is just debt, the building, and things like that. So we're at 1.8, no, we're fine. Now, in 2021, we did extremely well. We did get to increase our fund balance by 1.7, and I'll talk more about the fund balance in the next slide. Last year, we have, and this year, we have the ARPA funds, and next year, we have to figure out what to do with that. Now, this is our fund balance coming from 2015 to 2020. As you can see, it continues to go down. In 2021, we had a very good year, so we're up probably again to where we are into 2015. But our expenses are also up, and our fund balance policy is a percentage of our totals. So the next slide shows our percentages. So in 2015, we're at 35% fund balance. At the end of 2020, we were at 26%. Even with the $1.7 million benefit we incurred last year increased to our fund balance with our expenses going up, going into 2023, we're only going to be slightly up to here. So to really get a good, be in a good, good position financially for our credit risk and if we get COVID again or any other kind of crisis, we really should be able to try to get up to the 30% to 35% range. So that's why we are recommending not to use fund balance to fill that gap. This is our recommendation, and this is what we would like to put forward. Increase taxes to take from 16 mil to 17 mil. That'll generate approximately half of the gap. And then the rest of the gap, the other half, to use our ARPA funds. And hopefully, our, our revenues will continue to recover from the poor economy, and then we won't have to continue to depend on ARPA and fund balance. And again, I'd recommend not to use fund balance because of the prior slide. We declined from 35% to 26%, and we should be going the other way. You should be building it, which would be another $2 to $4 million to get that way over nine. So our next meet, we had a meeting last Thursday, and we had no participants. Next Wednesday is our next one, and we'll send out a reminder to all council members, and hopefully you can drum up some business and have people come out here, hear our talk about the budget, and understand why we would need to raise taxes. And then it's available for public review and final adoption, we have till this December 6.
I have a question, Kathy, and I don't know why, I just don't know that we were talking about the fund balance. Hypothetically, say we use 100% ARPA funds to cover the gap and no fund balance. How does that affect our rating? Or does it affect, or is it a positive thing if we use...
They see it as a one-time...
Okay, so they're not, they're not even at like, no, you just didn't tap into your fund balance, you used a different...
Yeah, it's a one-time thing, so.
Got you. And we may have talked about that.
I mean, we can talk around it, I mean, saying that we expect our revenue to be, but...
Right, got you.
If we don't make it up in 2024...
Then you're raising taxes more.
Right, right, yeah. We raised it two mil. I'm trying to use the conversation now.
Every other year, we did that, we raised it two mil, and I don't...
Yeah, right, no, understood.
We just a lot, we have a lot facing this in 2023 financially and economically.
Okay.
Things in a hole. I mean, the best case would be it turns out great, and then we don't raise taxes next year, but that's a long shot. Thank you. So the, what I'm asking tonight is just to authorize the advertisement of the ordinance.
Counsel, any questions?
I had a comment. $1.8 million can kind of come from a lot of places. I mentioned like some of the, some of the funding that we don't always see. I've been complaining a lot about small things, like I'm seeing garages being operated out of alleyways, I'm seeing people running kitchens out of, you know, bread and breakfast spots out of their homes. I've seen a lot of stuff like that, you know, whether we want to acknowledge it or not, but if you add that up across the town, 50, 40,000 people, there's some enforcement issues that we might have too that's not capturing a lot of the revenue that's in the community.
One of the things I see, and this came from Amundar, we, Amundar's requiring the business privilege license. One of the hopeful spots next year is we have a lot more business privilege tax licenses being applied for this year, so I'm hoping that will generate a lot more money next year. That's one bright spot. I don't know about enforcement for those type of things.
Yeah, so I mean, one of the, like you said, with the business privilege tax license, with every contractor, we've issued over 750 licenses at this point, and this is the highest our tax collector has reported at. We've, this is the highest number of licenses ever issued in Norris Town. But that's because we're being extremely diligent and making sure that every contractor is actually registered with us, and that will make a big impact. For example, a year and a half, two years ago, we had one contractor where we had issued a stop work order, and one of the things we found was that their license was pretty much suspended because they didn't have, they didn't renew their business privilege license. And when they had to do that filing, they paid, they paid close to $8,000 in fees that were owed to the municipality. So that, that was just one contractor, so times that by several hundred, so that's going to help out with that. We discussed that with our rental properties, where actually the letters are being generated as we speak. Usually, we send them out in the middle of October. We are running two weeks behind right now due to, you know, staffing issues in our department. But they're going to be going out, and every single property owner that is renting properties in Norris Town, we have over 3,000 buildings, 8,000 housing units, all of them are being required to obtain their business privilege license. And one of the projects that Mr. Jones and Kathy and myself discussed was in March and April of next year, we're actually going to create a template, we're going to get the guidance from the solicitor's office, and we're actually going to go to all of the businesses located in Norris Town, whether it's a gas station, whether it's a, you know, a coffee shop, whatever, and we're going to go door-to-door and give them those notices and say, hey, one of the requirements to operate a business in Norris Town is obtaining this license. So hopefully, in the next couple of years with all these efforts, it'll make a significant impact with collecting those tax revenues that have been due to the municipality, and hopefully it'll provide some relief, you know, with raising taxes and stuff like that.
And let me, I'd like to put on record that we talked about enforcement earlier. Enforcement doesn't end with the municipality, it ends with the judge. And so if the judges are forgiving, you know, businesses for not honoring the citations and the fines that they're expected to pay, the revenue goes out. We have to hold everybody accountable for their performance.
Counsel, any other questions?
Seeing none, do I have a motion to authorize the advertisement of Ordinance 22-05?
None.
Madam Secretary.
Rebecca Smith.
Hi.
Hakeem Jones.
Hi.
Dustin Queenan.
Hi.
Heather Lewis.
Hi.
Thomas LaPera.
Aye. Discussion on preliminary 2023 to 2027 capital improvement plan.
Okay, all of you have received in your package the detailed revised, or the detailed 2023, 2027 CIP plans. In August, we had updated the 2022, 2026 plan, and this is just following along with that, and we've stuck with all the financing that we had for 2022 and 2023. Everybody has stuck to those numbers. One of the problems we've had is with the price increases, especially Thomas. Just, he would, he just would prioritize his equipment and just reallocated whatever budget he had among 2023. And many of his things from 2022 actually carried over to 2023 because we can't get the equipment, it takes nine to 18 months, so. So a lot of the, what you saw in 2022, 26 plan is right in here, but it's moved to 2023, so you'll see that in there. And Thomas is going to present some of that later today. The major things in here are, again, the building renovations, this will be the last year for that, so we expect another of the last $5 million to go through last year, that's the largest. The new fire station we have coming up, a new fire equipment, the Quint, police vehicles for 2023, lighted properties, paving, and then Thomas will go over what he's going to be purchasing this year. And then we have the Parks and Rec, we have Roosevelt Field in there, the recreation area, what, what we're going to do there, and the skate park. So they're the, the major things in there. And again, not a lot of changes from what we had discussed in August. Does anybody, do you have a copy? Do you need a copy?
Oh, no.
Counsel, any questions?
So this is just four comments, and then we'll be presenting it December 6 for final approval, along with the budget.
Seeing none, move on to the proposed 2023 consolidated fee schedule.
Okay, I have new, this is a new fee than, than what you had in your package. The top few pages are the changes from last year to 20, what we're proposing for 2023.
Thank you. Thank you.
We'll just go through the changes. Okay, the first section is changes to police services, increasing, I don't know if, should I go through each one? Or?
In the interest, in the interest of Philly, Philly.
Yeah, I know, I know. Well, yes, I appreciate that.
But I think the real, the thing about it is, and we want to give you guys an opportunity to look through this, make any comments. You know, a fee schedule is going to be adopted ultimately when a budget is adopted. And we'd like to have your comments on, on this, on these proposed fee changes. And certainly, like, at the next meeting, we can, we can have a more in-depth discussion after you've had a chance to digest it, and, and give us some feedback in terms of what, what direction we're going in. I know most of this is about trying to capture operating costs. Again, we can make profit, but we do try to capture operating costs, and some of it about, you know, I know in terms of the codes, et cetera, we were trying to capture, really trying to, for those items that we do control, quick ticketing, to put a little bit more pressure on folks to be compliant by making increases to those. We're trying to be judicious about it because, as we've discussed before, there is a limit to which a municipality can find without it becoming an issue for, you know, the courts in terms of us overfiling folks. So I think it'd be a good thing if you guys look this over. We'll be happy to send you electronic copy again of the updated one. And then give us whatever feedback you want to give between here and then, and we can talk about it at work session as well.
I have a quick question. Oh, go ahead.
You can go, you have your hand up first.
Oh, well, my head. So the first page with the violations, most of it parking and prohibited parking and things like that, is that police, like parking enforcement? And what about after hours? Because like, if somebody's parked overnight, like, we, after four-thirty, people park wherever they want to park, so how is the enforcement?
I think we've hired one person for the budget, so they'll have their work nice.
That person will be, okay. And so when I see somebody parked in the big parking or sidewalk space because their door is, there's like fifteen feet from the curb to their door, and they park on the sidewalk, I can call and say, hey, even though it's not.
Okay.
Rebecca Smith?
I have two. Not that I have any problem in the increased annual towing company license rate, but just a question about why twenty-five dollars a year to two hundred dollars a year? That seems like a.
I think we were the lowest around. We hadn't reasoned a long time, so we want to be competitive, or not competitive, but in line with everyone else.
Okay, so that's consistency. And then my second question, I think, is for Amender. Looking at like the failure to cut high, like these quick ticket items, these increased not too long ago, right? Like, I think we were in virtual meetings in COVID when we increased it from like twenty-five to fifty.
So.
And so just the thought process and reasoning there.
So, so when we did that, we actually had, at that time, we had three instant fines. And what we had done at that point was, we went from three offenses that could receive an instant ticket to fifteen. And the current fee is fifty dollars for a majority of the violations, and there's five of them, which is a hundred dollars, which is like working without a permit, or having hazardous materials in unauthorized, you know, manner, more serious violations. Those are currently one hundred dollars. And several council members have actually reached out to me directly, Mr. Jones, and said, hey, you know, they're getting a lot of complaints from, you know, the constituents from their district that, you know, the property next door, they get a ticket for fifty dollars, but it's not encouraging those maybe, you know, absentee property owners from actually doing the property maintenance that's required at that property. Because if the ticket is only fifty dollars and it costs them maybe fifty dollars or seventy-five dollars, for them, it might be worth that risk of not maintaining it and, you know, letting it go one month. And if codes catches us, they catch us. So this is to kind of encourage and, and, you know, let property owners know that there are actual consequences for failure to maintain your property, and that's why it's a hundred dollars, because now it will actually be costing them something for failure to comply. And so that's, that's what the thought process is behind that. And that was several council members. I know Councilman Queenen has, you know, he actually wanted to raise it even higher. He had requested, but after we had that talk with Mr. Jones and Solicitor Calcanti, you know, it was advised that we shouldn't have it that high, and these are more manageable fines and more reasonable fines for failure to comply.
And Amender, I know we had a conversation briefly earlier today, and I mentioned that to counsel. Do you have any more comments or anything you wanted to add whatsoever?
I mean, if, if, if you guys want to, you know, this is a council decision to increase these fines from fifty to a hundred, or from one hundred to two fifty for these. It is a decision by council. If you guys want, we can bring you more data to show you the type of tickets we're currently issuing, how fast, you know, somebody actually gets into compliance once a ticket is issued. But a lot of this also has to do with, as Madam Vice President was mentioning, was with the citations that are being issued, right? So when it's a non-traffic citation being issued, we heard from a frustrated property owner earlier, you know, we, we go out to the property several times, we issue notices, and really nothing happens. And then once we do issue a citation, you know, we really are in the mercy of the judge in making the fine what it's going to be for that non-compliance, whereas here, it's an administrative municipal fine, which will be on the spot. They would have to pay it, and if they don't pay it now, eventually, when it's time for them to sell their property, they're going to request a tax serve from Kathy and the Finance Office. And then these would be fines that are showing as unpaid, which, you know, we may not get collection today, but down the road, we will receive revenues for, for those fines. So it's, it's a council decision, you know, to, to do this increase.
I think it just helps people like this, like, start hearing the crowd, you know, that can't go in her own backyard because of her neighbor, who's like a landlord or whatever, that's just not doing what they're supposed to do. So we got to hold people accountable, I think, or something.
And I do want to stress that we do have an appeals process in place. So, you know, we always work with all of our property owners, whether it's rental property, whether it's owner occupied. Let's say if somebody was out of town, somebody got sick, as long as they have a valid, you know, excuse, and we look at, we do a whole search of the property to see if this is not like a habitual offender. So just because you do get a hundred dollar ticket doesn't mean that, you know, now you're going to have to pay that. We do take all of that into consideration during the appeal process. So if somebody was out of town, there was a family emergency, those tickets would be, you know, voided and waived for those particular instances. So there is, there is an appeals process that you council have put together to help those residents with relief, with actual relief should be.
Thank you. Counsel Jones?
I see both sides of the aisle. I mean, violations and habitual folks do need to be penalized so that they don't do it. But when I see these prices going up to thirty dollars, it's like you're six dollars away from downtown Philadelphia. The concern I have is, is the average resident. If it's the street parking, do not park on this side from eight to noon. I think those are the folks who get hit the hardest. And it might be a day that the street's not even cleaned up. So we get a lot of complaints that you're asking us to move, and yet you're not doing. So I think those are the issues that I have, that I think they're a little too steep because they are your average residents, and they're not habitual most times. And I've known folks because of the element, and maybe their arthritis is why they couldn't get out and move their car. So I would hate to see those type of people get hit with these type of fines, so.
Yeah, and I know that Chief respond on that. So those, those particular fines are actually under the police department.
And I think in like places like the Human Services Center, I hear all the time that people are there for work, but they technically don't have enough legal room. They move their car across the street, and they still get a ticket. So I think those are the nuisance cases that I, that I get. They're not purposely out there, you know, violating the law. It's just circumstances usually put them in that position. So how can we work on those expensive fines and maybe, you know, look at reasonable rates for those type of offenses?
And that's your decision, but I think that if you don't raise them incrementally, then you'll wait five years and it'll jump up twenty dollars. Because some points you have to raise it because you're paying people who are to do the job. Also comes a problem where it becomes literate, becomes literate, things like that. When you mention Philadelphia, it's known as Philadelphia because it's so filthy. And it's one of the issues, like, you know, that because they used to clean the streets when I was a kid, people complained, we don't have a way to move our cars, so they stopped doing it. And now they're doing it again. So I think people just have to, have to find a way to do it. But I think not cleaning the streets is just not, in my opinion, it's not a good option because it becomes something where you're not cleaning, cleaning the city and the town, and it'll become, it'll be, long-term, it'll be an issue.
Counsel, any other questions? We'll take a look at this, and then we'll get back with the feedback. Move on to Public Works, Resolution twenty-two-dash-seventy-three.
I'm going to wait for, yeah. The, the council could look back. We are trying to show them what this amendment will look like. Then the next page. And the first one is purchase of three IH, eight, the five, something chassis, put it to the three. That's the chassis that we're going to be purchasing there. Then what you have on the left, the trim left is what it will eventually look like. But what we're changing is a city truck that was purchased in two thousand and seven. And when we purchased it, the life expectancy was supposed to be ten years. And so we've gotten the ten years and five extra years out of it. And the maintenance cost is becoming very expensive, so that's why we're trying to replace it. Second page. The next one is the body for the three chassis. So that's what the body, it will be a stainless steel body, so that's what the body will look like. Next one. The next is, the presence, street sweeper was bought in two thousand and seven, and is supposed to be, have a useful life of five years. And we've gotten the five years, I believe, but the fact is that this is probably one, the one community, that is, this is a workhouse. This is something we use every day. And we want to replace it with another one, which is shown on the right. And the one that we're going to replace it with is probably going to be better than what we have. And it's probably going to serve this community much, much more. So that's what that's showing. So next page. The next one is a crack ceiling machine. For us to, most time when you design a road pavement, a street, you are going to say that with good maintenance, it's going to last for ten to fifteen years. And the good maintenance starts from the fourth day you pave the street. So the new street that we have now, I really want to make sure that we can start maintaining them right from beginning, right, right from the start. So that's why we're trying to get a crack ceiling machine. It's something new. So that's it there. The next one is an enclosed trailer. We will use it to be storing most of our pack equipment. We don't have where we store them right now, and they're all over the place. So this will consolidate most of them in one place, and we can always get to them quickly. So that's what this is all about. The next one is actually a new equipment. It's called a compact sidewalk sweeper. One problem we've had in this community that we can, we're going to clean the streets, but the sidewalks, as far as the commercial sidewalks are safe, very much unclean. So most time, you see that everything, most, most of those eventually wash out to the street. So we're going to be using this to clean some sidewalks and then use it especially the commercial district, the main street, Marshall, and then we're going to be using to clean the inlets too. We're having problems actually picking clean our inlet, our storm inlets. So that's what this will be used for most of the time. Then the next is a replacement of a two standard cab dump truck, five fifty. We've had this for, since two thousand and seven, too. And so the intention is become a serious maintenance nightmare. So that's why we're asking to get it replaced. So what you see on the left is what we have now, and what you see on the right is what we're going to be replacing it with. The last, but not the least, is something with the first one, it's a five fifty cab dump truck. The only difference is that this one would be double, we have a back where the staff can get in. So that's just the difference. So what we have there has been there since two thousand and four. What we have now has been there since two thousand and four. It's supposed to have a useful life of seven years. So we have really gotten about eighteen years from it. So what the Resolution two, twenty-two, something three, I'm asking the city council to approve the purchase of these trucks, equipment and chassis from multiple suppliers for a total amount of about one million, six hundred and forty-four thousand, eight hundred and forty-eight, forty-six dollars and five cents.
The equipment that's being replaced, what's going to be done with that? Is that something that will be auctioned or sold or, you know?
We're going to put it through the process of.
We could use two street sweepers?
The city has a process of actually getting rid of surplus equipment with the Finance Director. Yeah, so as soon as we get this, we're going to put that in motion.
So all of those replacements that will be sold, nothing will be kind of kept.
I want to, I need to say that most of this equipment, we might not see them before twenty-twenty-four. Most of them will not be seen before twenty-twenty-four, yeah.
Counsel, any other questions?
I mean, it's clear that your equipment's been old, and you've been doing what you can with a horrible situation. And I haven't seen Public Works come, come along much over the last few years, requests and things, so I think this'll last us the next ten years or so. So I support it.
Five.
Five.
I think one of the things we do have to do, and this is part of the plan that we're coming for, part of our, our issue is we don't have a facility where we can protect our equipment. And so it just suffers by being sitting out all of the time. And so that's, that's part of the plan going forward is to get a place that the equipment can be housed and can help extend their life.
Counsel, any other questions? Do I have a motion to approve Resolution twenty-two-dash-seventy-three?
Come on.
Second.
Madam Secretary?
Rebecca Smith?
Aye.
Hakeem Jones?
Aye.
Dustin Queenen?
Aye.
Heather Lewis?
Aye.
Thomas LaPera?
Aye, I have it, Resolution passes. Who's rated the departmental reports? Mr. Odetteva, would you stay with us?
Yes, actually, another point I want to present to counsel before I present my report. Sometime, I think it must have been sometime last month, a resident had come to complain about having a problem with parking on a Tuesday. And I was just trying to explain to city council what's going on. And just for council to know, we have about four hundred street sweeping sections that we do every week. And every Monday to Friday, we sweep about eighty sweeping sections every, every day. And I just wanted to explain the problem with that popular street, popular street. The arrow, if you look at that arrow, that arrow shows how the truck moves, the sweeping truck moves. And I've said it, what really happened is that, another thing I need to emphasize is that this is not the only place we have this problem in the community. is that this is not the only place we have this problem in the community. Like I said, we have about 400 sweeping sections in the community. We have this problem in about seven sections and in this community. And most of the areas we have this problem are those areas where in, the fact is that people do not really live there, per se. If you look at Popular, on the south side of Popular, there are no residential buildings there. On the other side of, you're going to see an apartment. That apartment has a driveway that people cannot park there. So the only six parkings on Popular, one on, I hope I'm getting my bearings right, one on the east end and the other one is on the west end. The way the sweeping, the sweeper goes is that it starts on Astor, then gets from Astor to Warren, then from Warren it gets to MacClay, then from MacClay it gets to Popular, then does a U-turn at Astor and Popular, then comes up again, then goes to MacClay before it goes to Wood. So that's why the MacClay, Popular is one of the seven streets, seven street sections in the whole community, out of 400, that we have, that we sweep both sides of the street the same day. And I'm going to be asking this council, I've been here for six years, that's the only person that has complained about this. He's the only, I tend to feel that if we are going to change this sweeping pattern because of this one complaint, it is going to have a cascading effect. This, the sweeping route of this community is something that had been used for 50 years, 30 years, and in all honesty, I really think it really, really worked well. If we change it now, it will be, I really think that there could be kind of a worm that will open, that we might not know how far it will go. So I wanted to explain this to council. So then the next thing I want to talk about is what we're doing right now. Right now is a list season, so we're picking lists all over the community. And right now, we're meeting our targets. We pick lists on every, other, every what we call a sweeping route. We pick it every day and we complete it daily. I've been working with Mascaro in the past month to plan the next citywide sweep, which will be this Saturday. We are going to have another citywide sweep this Saturday, where we are going to have dumpsters, 16 dumpsters put in certain locations in the community, and then encouraging our residents to actually bring out things they want to trash, not contractors, residents. So I've been working with Mascaro to get that done, so hopefully it will be a success again. We have finished the last part of our mowing for the year, and we have applied the necessary pesticides and to all our parks. So we, I think this year, we're very ready for the parks. Then we're getting ready for snow, getting ready with the routes, as snow routes, getting ready with people that are plowing snow, and getting ready with the equipment. And that's what we're doing, and I'll be ready to answer questions that the council will have.
Any other questions? Comments? Saying no, just keep up the good work. Thank you. Councilman, or, not councilman. Mr. Jones?
All right, I'll take you home.
I don't think you want the council position, do you?
No, no, never do, never do. No, it's not that. Too much, too much fire. I don't want that. I'll take it quickly through this, just kind of break, update you on some of the major things that have been happening over the course of the last one. So one, I want to talk about the recreation center project. So I'm still waiting, and I would appreciate any push you might notch with the commissioners in terms of making the decision about that recreation project, recreation center project. I did meet with Lee Sotziak as far as the site is concerned. We met about that, and it's on them to make the decision. We talked about the, when I did talk about it, we talked about the, well, I'll talk about that in a minute. So that project is going well in terms of the school district. We have an upcoming meeting with the superintendent to talk about Roosevelt Field. He's indicated they're ready to go. So we got Crystal coordinating with our solicitor, their solicitor, and my team and his team to talk about that and come back to you guys with how we're going to try to move forward to doing that. We submitted our, we submitted our grant for the master plan, for the $100,000 master plan grant. So hopefully, I think we're looking next month, in the next month, we might hear something about that. Some of you know, we went to, Chief and I went up to South Dakota, Rapid City, South Dakota, and while we're in Rapid City, we got a chance to go to Deadwood, which is interesting. Just interesting place to be, but to see the fire station. So I'm going to have a video I'll show you all next time. Tonight, I want to get you all out of here. But just to look at that alternative prefabricated construction of a firehouse, essentially, they're talking about being able to do it at two-thirds the cost of a traditional bill. Category five rated, earthquake rated, being able to deliver it within, you know, build it is like ordering a fire truck, build it to our specifications, deliver it. That would take eight to 10 months usually, and then build it, bring it, deliver it, and set it up in a matter of a couple of weeks. And it's good to go. So what we're looking at now is measuring that against traditional as well. And I wanted to get both of those alternatives in front of you guys to see you look at it. But see, you look at the process. One of the things that Chief and I are going to do, we're looking at, I think in Boston, there's a firehouse that's been constructed. We wanted to visit them, talk to the firefighters, and see how they feel about it in terms of it. As far as the site is concerned, one of the conversations Lee and I have, they have submitted the demolition permits for the old jail. So they're moving forward with that. But I came to understand that their timetable for dealing with anything on that entire site, including the jury parking lot, they are kind of years down the road, whereas we're months. And so what we've gotten, the municipal engineers putting together for Lee to look at, and we had an agreement, we're going to put some mockups of what the space we would need on the site would look like versus what would be remaining for them to do what they need to do. And we're going to try to work through that. And we'll try to work through it using both kind of construction designs to see what we can come back with. He knows that our timetable is months, and so, you know, he says that they are having a serious conversations, for Alan Ken as well, having serious conversations about recognizing what I need is. So again, any help y'all can give and kind of pushing them to do, but they did get their permits in. Skate park, give you an update. So a team met with Jimmy Gorecki and the design folks that we've been talking to about it to just work out the final specs for the RFP. That RFP is going to go out the month of November, and it includes all of the, not only the design and construction, but the public engagement elements that the Winding Bitter will be responsible for, for making sure the skate community and residents at large will be involved. So we're excited about that. We've done all that we need to do to prepare it in terms of the environmentals, phase one and phase two, as well as a survey, which will be included in the package. So I expect within the next week or two, the RFP will be out. And then the final thing I wanted to say is congratulations, council. We are the recipients of 68 acres of property at the State Hospital. So we have finally made it to that point. The conveyance happened actually on Friday. And we had one other thing, we had to make sure the date it was going to happen in terms of making sure we got a title search check done. We got that done. The RDA is in control of the property on our behalf. And at our next meeting, we will be bringing to you the draft of the RFP for putting that on the street as well. So moving along, five years, we got it closed. Rest my case, Your Honor.
I was keeping you guys here. State Hospital, once all the demolition is done, could the space be used for like viable community projects until something's done? I think of like festivals, I think of events, I think of revenue-making things until a project...
Yeah, I mean, essentially, part of the, in the interim, because they're doing, still doing demolition, the state will have site control while they're doing demolition. I think it's going to be possible if we're not interfering with that flow, that'll be fine. I think there are two buildings left to demolish, but that's the only control they have. So if there's something to be done out there, we're out of the way, I think it can happen.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Motion to adjourn?
Tom Lu.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
To adjourn, thank you.